All right, welcome, everybody, to our first real business meeting of 2025. So our last meeting was more of a celebratory meeting where we welcomed our two newest council members, and we said goodbye to our old council members, as well as thanked a lot of our volunteers in our city. So now we're getting down into business, which is why we're all here. So at this stage, Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Kalmanson.
Here.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Ms. Toad.
Here.
Council President McTirren.
Present. All right, at this time, I would actually ask our fire department to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[laughter]
Our blessed minions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order and march.
Thank you for that. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearing and comments, please?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed-session meeting minutes from December 17th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, as well, do I have a motion to approve?
Council President, I believe that there may be one member who wishes to recuse from that vote. Or abstain.
We weren't here.
Yeah.
We weren't here.
Okay, so you don't want to abstain?
She didn't say anything.
Yeah. Okay, she was just looking at me like, no.
All right, so we'll approve it then unanimously, for those who are voting. Secondly, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the organizational meeting of January 7th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we're on to our report section of our meeting. Madam Mayor, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. I have some exciting updates to share with you all tonight. I'm really proud to announce that thanks to the tireless efforts of our mayor's homelessness task force, one individual who has been homeless for eight years will be moving into permanent housing next week. And just today, our dedicated team helped another person who has experienced homelessness for two years view an apartment. Additionally, we have one individual moving into transitional supportive housing and another into senior housing. So this is really incredible progress, and it's all happening really quickly because of the unwavering commitment of the task force and our volunteers and our service providers in Summit. And this has been only since July. We've made a lot of progress. So their focus on finding long-term solutions is really making a difference. So thank you to all involved. I also want to highlight two exciting events this weekend. Summit's Free Public Library, in partnership with the YMCA, will host their Lunar New Year Celebration on Saturday. Unfortunately, if you have not already signed up, the 600-person registration filled up so quickly, but I encourage you to mark your calendars for future events. And on Sunday, if you missed the opportunity on Saturday, the Summit Chinese American Association will host another fantastic Chinese New Year Celebration at the Summit Middle School. Both events will feature incredible performances and activities to celebrate the Year of the Snake. Last year, both events were really phenomenal, so I encourage you to get out if you've missed them in the past. In addition, despite the weather, we had a great turnout for many of the MLK Day of Service events around town. I had the privilege of visiting and helping out at several of them. And one important note, one of the things at the Arboretum was postponed because of the weather. The Valentine's Day card-making activity at the Arboretum has been rescheduled to next Saturday morning from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00, and the cards will be created for clients at Sage Elder Care. And lastly, I want to express my sincere thanks to our Department of Public Works staff who worked tirelessly, long 12-hour shifts around the clock this holiday weekend to prepare for and respond to the snow event. And it's because of their dedication that our city continues to function smoothly, no matter what Mother Nature sends our way. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great report. All right, now we're on to our city administrator report. Administrator Baldwin, please.
Thank you, Council President. Starting off with an important update, Yogi County has issued a Code Blue Alert, which remains in effect through January 24th due to the very low temperatures outside. Anyone that is in need of shelter can go to the Union County Division of Social Services during business hours for assistance. There's a flyer also on our website and has been shared on social media, so please share that with anyone that may need that assistance. On a different note, and very timely, since all of our firefighters are here, I'm pleased to report that the new firehouse at 281 Broad Street is now fully operational, and the old firehouse is no longer in service. Trees, the curbside tree collection is ending on January 31st, so make sure that all residents have your Christmas trees outside before then to be collected. And lastly, the Summit Free Market will be held this Friday at the transfer station from 12:00 to 2:00 for anyone who is looking to pick up or drop off items. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, for my report, I have two items. One is, I'm gonna, I'd like to announce a correction to the notice. In the papers and mailings, that the City of Summit's Affordable Housing Committee will hold a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, February 18th at 6:00 p.m. to provide its annual status update of the city pursuant to the requirements of its settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center and judgment of compliance and repose granted on January 22nd, 2019, by the Honorable Camille Kenny, JSC. This final, because we are about to end round three, this final annual status update will address all affordable housing activities that have occurred within the city in the past year. The Zoom meeting information is located on the notice for the meeting posted on our city's website. The notice mistakenly said Monday instead of Tuesday, so this is a correction. Make sure everyone gets it. So the meeting will be taking place on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. And then my second report is, some of you may have heard or seen, but I wanted to make sure I announce this in public, is that the city's rideshare program that we had been running for seven or eight years, the council decided at the end of last year that we were not going to re-up it with our vendors, I think it was Lyft. So for those who are familiar with the program, this is where the city subsidized residents to use a rideshare app to get dropped off at the train station, get picked back up on the train station. They could, they could schedule a ride with one of the, with the app. The reason for doing this was way back when our, Ms. Baldwin's predecessor, Michael Rogers, suggested this as an alternative to kind of take some pressure off of our very limited commuter, or I'm sorry, resident commuter parking spots. And the thought process was if we could be creative and allow people to maybe use a rideshare program, it would save the city millions of dollars by not having to build a new parking garage. So the council adopted it at the time, and it's been running ever since. We made the decision in December not to do this. It was, it's been, it usually you have to sign a new contract starting January 1st. And we did this because last year it cost about $80,000 of our taxpayer money to subsidize these rides. And again, the thought was that money made sense in the context of not having to build a new garage. Well, lo and behold, I don't think anyone's really looked at the numbers recently after COVID. The fact is, not as many people are commuting into the city. And we were running about 30 rides a day was kind of the peak amount that was being demanded, and it made no sense to continue to subsidize this because we have a lot more commuter parking spaces available than 30. So this was $80,000 that we just did not need to spend, and we made the decision to cancel it. So for those people who were using it, I apologize, but it, you know, we have to watch our, you know, nickels and dimes, and $80,000 is more than nickels and dimes. So we made the decision to discontinue it. And I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of that, if they were trying to find the app and wonder why they couldn't get a city subsidized Lyft or Uber to the train station. And that is my president's report. Okay, all right, so oddly, Madam Mayor, it looks to me like we may have a swearing-in ceremony, or more than one possibly.
All right, we're gonna begin with Jacob Baskin. So why don't, Jacob, why don't you come up and anybody you choose to bring with you?
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. It's always very humbling to see the fire service come out for all our sworn personnel. I think we have members from Brookley Heights, Chatham, I think Elizabeth, Springfield. Appreciate you coming out. Thank you, guys, the fire freaks for stepping up. I know it's a big deal. Went through a lot to get to this point. Congratulations. And to the families, thank you for sharing your love with us. Our department is composed of a bunch of highly dedicated firefighters and officers. We promise we will train your recruits, given the resources needed, so they can fill the mission safely. And thank you for sharing with us. With that, I'll hand it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Let me do a little introduction here. Jacob Baskin became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in August 2024 and served in the Volunteer Division's Hose Company Number Two. Jacob has completed firefighter one and two and has received training as a nationally-registered emergency medical tech. He's also an active member of the Morris Township Volunteer Department since 2022. Jacob has an Associate's from, Associate's Degree from Raritan Valley Community College Vocational Technical Programs in Environmental Control Technology and Commercial Energy Management Technology. Could you have found a longer? Okay, just checking. Jacob also holds several safety certifications. Pro Board Hazmat Awareness and Operations, Rapid Intervention Crew, Advanced Auto Stabilization, Heavy Lifting Operations, and Advanced Forceable Entry. Congratulations, Jacob, on your appointment as a career firefighter with the Summit Fire Department. I, Jacob Baskin, do solemnly swear.
I, Jacob Baskin, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Come on up. While you're coming, I will, I will start introduction here. Joshua Evers, come on up. Became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in August 2024 and served in the Volunteer Division's Hose Number Two. Josh has completed firefighter one and two. Since 2023, Josh has been an active member of the Oldwick Township Volunteer Fire Department. Josh graduated from Voorhees High School in 2022. Josh holds several certificates. Hazmat Awareness and Operations, ICS 100, 700, and 800, you skipped a couple. Rapid Intervention Crew. Congratulations, Josh, on your appointment as a career firefighter with the Summit Fire Department. Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Joshua Evers, do solemnly swear.
I, Joshua Evers, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
A little pronunciation check. Nicholas Soraco, come on up and bring your friends and family. And as you approach, I will introduce you. Nicholas Soraco became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in June of 2023 and served in the Volunteer Division's Chemical Engineer Company One. Nick has completed firefighter one and two. He's also an active member of the Brookley Heights Volunteer Fire Department since 2017. Nick graduated from Governor Livingston High School in 2018. He holds several certificates. Swift Water Technician, Fire Instructor Level One, and Rope Technician. Congratulations, Nick, on your appointment as a career firefighter to the Summit Department. Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Nicholas Soraco, do solemnly swear.
I, Nicholas Soraco, I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
Of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Come on up. Brayden became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in June of 2023 and served in the Volunteer Division's Union Hose Company One. Nick has completed, sorry, thank you, Brayden has completed firefighter one and two. He's also an active member of the Chatham Township Volunteer Fire Department since 2019. Presently, Brayden is attending the County College of Morris. Some of these certificates Brayden holds are Rapid Intervention Crew Operations, Incident Command Systems 100, 200, and 300, Vehicle Rescue Operations, and Machinery Rescue Awareness Operations and Technician Levels. Congratulations, Brayden, on your appointment as a career firefighter with the Summit Fire Department. Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Brayden Almgren, do solemnly swear.
I, Brayden Almgren, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Council, thank you again. You always very support the fire department. You always fill up vacancies in a very timely manner. We appreciate it. So I'm glad the fire department, thank you all for your support, and we appreciate it. I would like to request a five-minute recess so we can clear the chambers after that. I just want to say welcome, gentlemen, and I also want to tell everybody here that I had the privilege of being part of the interview process, and these gentlemen are very impressive, so we're very fortunate to have them. Welcome to Summit.
Council President, if I could just have a couple of words, while y'all walking out, but I, I just want to say congratulations to the parents. You raised some very impressive young men, and this is only the start. And I'm very, I'm very, very happy for you. What I'm seeing here makes my, warms my heart, you know, I have children of my own, and seeing them go off into a career is just, it's very exciting, so congratulations.
All right, with that, we'll take a five-minute recess for you guys to go celebrate and congratulate each other. So well deserved, and congratulations, gentlemen. All right, we're gonna continue on with our meeting now. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilman Palowski for our historical minute.
And we had such a good crowd.
I know. They don't know what they're gonna miss. They're gonna wish they had stayed.
Well, I, you know, I, we don't have a volunteer for tonight, so sometimes when that happens, I, I look back on the library website, and I dusted off a couple of old historic minutes about the history of Summit as interpreted by some of our former high school students. So the first one's about the township of Summit, and the second one is about the city of Summit. So, and I'll, I'll cut some of the redundancies, but this first one is by Josie Coats, who was a Summit High School student, April 3rd, 2018. Summit has a history of independence, and its story of becoming a township provides a lesson in the strong will and keen foresight of a few select people. Springfield, Summit, and New Providence were part of a larger area consisting of one half a million acres, purchased from the Lenape Indians in 1644 and named Elizabethtown after England's Queen Elizabeth. In 1793, Springfield Township, which included New Providence at the time, was known as Turkey Hill, as Turkey, and Summit was known as Turkey Hill, separated from Elizabethtown. In 1809, New Providence and Turkey Hill separated from Springfield, but Turkey Hill operated politically under New Providence Township. By the late 1860s, Summit Township was growing increasingly irritated at New Providence Township's lack of care for Summit. Another reason for Summit's increase in demand for independence was its growing economy due to the railroad coming in 1873, thanks to a local sawmill owner, Jonathan Crane Bonnell, who had offered land at no charge to the Essex and Morrison Essex Railroad to build the rails through Summit. Because of the railroad, Summit began to shift from a largely farming economy to a capitalist resort for the wealthy. Another notable person in Summit's history is G.J. Thibodeau, a New York lawyer and resident of Summit who not only rallied residents to seek independence from New Providence, but secured the introduction of the bill to the New Jersey House and Senate. As the bill was being passed through the House and Senate, he found a clause that had been slipped into the bill, requiring a vote of the people in each township, which surely meant defeat for the people of Summit. Thibodeau alerted the governor to this, and the governor demanded the bill be returned to its original form, which was easily passed as the Act to Form Summit Township and was approved March 23rd, 1869. Fast forward 30 years, and this one's by Caroline Wool from 2015. Summit was incorporated as a city at a special charter election on April 11th, 1899 by a vote of the township's electorate, 804 to 163. This step followed approval of the New Jersey Legislature to grant its city status. Despite a five-to-one voting margin, this was not easy to do. Summit became a township in 1869, was governed by a three-man committee dominated by Democrats. The reason for the change to a city form of government was the township was getting too large. 1899 population was over 5,000. For three people to handle its affairs, and the committee did not have sufficient powers. Republicans, led by one of Summit's best-known residents, again Jonathan Bonnell, were pushing the city plan, and the Democrats dominating township government were were pushing the city plan and the Democrats dominating township government were generally opposed. William Larned, that's a familiar name, was a key figure in these discussions as he was in many other aspects of Summit's history as the first president of Summit Bank. He chaired a committee in late 1898 to explore the best way to change the form of government. He concluded that the change should be from a township to a city. Larned suggested when one is grown to a man's size, he can no longer wear child's clothes. And it is the same with a town. When it is grown to the population of a city, its township clothing was outgrown. In the weeks leading to the election, there were vigorous debates, compromises, shifts in opinions and votes. Eventually, there was strong support for the change. The April election introduced the first mayor of the city, George H. Wilcox, a Republican, and the new seven-man common council representing five Republicans and two Democrats. Three representatives were from each of the two wards and one at large, Charles Day, was elected the council president. The new government wasted no time, and we've heard this before in the Tammy Baldwin historicals. A few days after the vote, the first common council adopted the first ordinance providing the mayor and council would serve without pay, an ordinance that still stands today, which is rare in municipalities. Is it really? Okay. Other early actions included matters that are somewhat underhandy from today's perspective. At its meeting in May 1899 appropriations for the ensuing year were approved and included $1,500 for fire, 500 for health, 4,000 for police, 5,000 general city expenses, 18,500 for roads, lights, and water, 1,000 for the poor totaling $32,200. In June, the council adopted an ordinance to prevent vice and immorality to possess public peace and good order in the city of Summit. In early 1900, an ordinance establishing the speed limit of, anybody want to guess? Seven miles per hour for autos in the city.
Thank you, Councilman Palowski. It's always great to get the history of our great community. Especially told through you, but from high school students' perspective. So that's great. At this moment, we have a treat. It's not on our agenda, so it's a nice little treat. We've got a presentation. Our presentation tonight is by Michelle Del Cursano. I hope I said that correctly. And she's going to tell us a little bit about Our House and how it operates in our community. Please.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council, for having me here tonight and allowing me this time to share our story with everybody. I'm Michelle Del Cursano. I'm the CEO of Our House. Our House is a nonprofit organization that serves adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and we started our roots right here in Summit 45 years ago. When a mom wanted more for her kids, and as a mom, I would want as much as I could give my kids. So I understand. Our first house opened on Greenfield Avenue 45 years ago and since then we've grown to have two houses in Summit plus six condos. And then throughout the state of New Jersey, we have 16 houses throughout Union, Essex, Morris, Middlesex, and Somerset Counties. In addition, we have eight-day programs and we serve over 100 people in our Employment Services Division. This, however, is just the story about Our House and I'm here tonight, I am here tonight to ask for help from this wonderful community that's always been so welcoming to us. As I mentioned, we have six condos and those house about, or home to about 12 individuals. And we have this strange phenomenon that keeps going on. It's happening to me right now. I keep aging, just like they do and they have more things that happen to them, just like that happens to me, more aches and pains and things that change as the decades go by. But they deserve the absolute best and so as I watch them get older, I want only the best for them. And as we do our strategic plan, we try and figure out what we're going to do with them and their situations. Right now, they all live in condos, which are not appropriate to age and place. It's not, they don't have, they have steep stairs, they don't have doorways that are wide enough. And so it's up to me to try and figure out what to do. Some of you may know who I think is kind of like the second mayor of Summit. Andy Anderson, who allowed me to talk about him tonight. He's a well-known Summit resident and he is served by Our House. He is getting older and he does live in one of those condos and as I watch him age, I started to get really nervous. And so I have met with the mayor and I have shared my concerns about Andy. Andy loves to spend his time in the city here, right? I'm sure most of you have seen him. He loves to go to the football games. He tells me all about them. I don't understand because I don't come to them, so I don't know anybody. But he is, he loves to go to the salon and hang out there all day with the ladies. He loves to eat here. He loves to just be a part of his community. And my fear is that I can find him a new place to live, but it'll take him out of his beloved city of Summit. And so my hope and dream is that I get to keep him here in Summit where he is happy. And that is where I need this community's help. I am looking to develop a ranch-style house for Andy and three or four or five of his friends that is walkable to downtown. The biggest challenge is that I need four parking spaces, which I know is always a challenge whenever I'm looking for any kind of program or housing. And while we've been, the mayor has been very supportive of this dream, I have not been able to connect or make anything happen. And so I would love to come to this community and see if there is anything that anybody knows of that we can do to help make this, this dream a reality. Andy is getting older and time is ticking, so I would like to act on this as quickly as possible. So, anything that we can do, I never even went through my presentation here. I forgot all about it. But the, I do have my information here and I do have business cards with me. So I could be found on the Our House website as well. That's easy enough. And if anybody has any ideas, I would love to hear about them because I know that, in my heart, I know that we're going to make this happen and this is going to be one of the greatest news stories as a community comes together to help one of their own. There's a lot of bad news every day and so I would love to put some good news out there. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
Questions?
Counsel President, so Andy, when I was in fifth grade, he would come by and every, he seemed like every football game from fifth grade all the way up to high school and he always reminds me of every touchdown that I dropped. Even to this day. You know, he said, "Jamal, you dropped that touchdown against, you know, against Irvington. I remember that." Like, Andy, never forget, man. So, but I, Andy is a remarkable human being and he's loved and adored by everyone in town. I mean, so, I don't know, whatever we need to do to take a look at this would be great, you know.
Yes, please, Madam Mayor.
Michelle, thank you, obviously, for being here tonight, but also for all your efforts. I'm going to make a little plug, just piggybacking on your presentation because I think it's important to make suggestions to the vulnerable minds. Realtors, landlords, people that, you know, are cruising through town and see a piece of property that might work. Please, you know, talk this in the back of your mind and look around town if you see anything that looks like it could even be a conversation. Please reach out to Michelle, reach out to myself. I'm happy to connect you with Michelle. I think this would be a really big win for people we care about and it's just another place where our Summit and the people that live here can show how awesome we are, so.
Also, we're making, we hope it's affordable, being a nonprofit.
Counsel President?
Yes, please, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you. Michelle, thank you very much for coming and presenting this. I think, you know, we are elected officials here, but Andy is a lot more popular than we are. If he ran for, if he ran for council, I'm sure he would beat all of us. So, you know, are there, I mean, obviously, this is probably a completely different conversation at a later date, but, you know, I would be interested in finding out the areas or, you know, the homes that you've looked at so far. You know, I'm hoping that there's 23,000 residents watching this tonight so that they know that you need help, Andy needs help. And, you know, as the mayor mentioned, you know, we can be the Summit that we are. The, what was it? What was that, what was that quote that you gave last night?
Summit.
Yes.
America runs on Dunkin', but Summit runs on volunteer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I didn't want to take your thunder.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So. Once our residents know that Andy needs help, you need help, Our House needs help, I'm hoping that we will rise to the occasion and find a place. Because it would be a true tragedy if we lost Andy.
I agree. I agree. Thank you.
Michelle, I just, I mean, for the people watching at home, it might make sense that people who don't really know how much you guys do in the community and the number of residents here, it might be helpful if you just explain that a little bit for them so they know if they are willing to get involved, just the scope of everything, the other stuff that you guys do.
Sure, sure. So we, in Summit, we serve two four-bedroom houses, so that's the total, obviously. And then the six condos, which is, I think it's actually 11, but it could hold up to 12. So that's what we serve. But overall, at Our House, we serve about 300 people. We're well-established in the state of New Jersey. We have an excellent reputation. We do phenomenally on all of our annual inspections and things like that. So we hold ourselves to a higher standard. I hold us to a higher standard. Our employees are dedicated. We have almost 300 of those employees who come in and who give up their holidays, that this is their family and that they are dedicated to the people that we serve. They love them like they're their own and our guys love them like they're their, you know, their family. And, you know, it's just, it's great what we do and it's great to be able to wake up every day and do this as my job and to be a part of something that is so remarkable because it's not just the people within Our House, but it's the people around Our House too, right? It's the communities that we're in. We're in so many of them and, you know, people are so generous and so kind to us. And that, you know, overshadows the ones that are not. But it is very, you know, there's a lot of good that happens and that I get to see every day.
That's great. I think I was on council my last go-around. I think you guys acquired one of your properties in town. And I think you guys are just great neighbors and fit great with the community. And I guess, you know, one of the benefits of being able to do this, not just to help Andy, but you could backfill the other four or five different spots. So it's not just helping someone that we all know, it's also helping a lot of other people that we don't, which is always a great goal. And this is just the mosaic, part of the mosaic. You guys are a great part of what I would call that mosaic in Summit that really cares and cares for people who need help. And it's so appropriate. I think you guys have started here and you're still engaged here and it's one of the things that I think everyone can be very, very proud of, all the hard work that you guys have done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. All right, we're getting on to the big business part of our meeting and we're going to start off, we have an ordinance for hearing today. So Madam Clerk, if you want to read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 25-3327, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to establish the 2024 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance amends the 2024 salary ordinance to create a new position entitled Finance Director. And when Tammy Baldwin was appointed the city administrator recently, she and the city agreed that she would retain the title of Chief Financial Officer and provide oversight for that function. Ms. Baldwin, unlike her predecessors, has the certifications and the licenses to do that. However, we still need someone to run the city's finances on a day-to-day basis and that's what this new finance director would do. So the position is not adding to headcount and instead it's merely filling a hole in the city administration. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
All right, I'm going to declare the hearing for this ordinance open. Does anyone from the public have comments on this ordinance? Comments from council? All right, I'm going to, the hearing now, I'm going to close the hearing. At this time, we have an ordinance for final consideration. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 25-3327, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to establish the 2024 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Having closed the hearing on this ordinance just moments ago, I move, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
So moved.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right, ordinance is adopted. All right, moving right along, we have a couple of ordinances for introduction. First is a finance ordinance. Please read the ordinance, Madam Clerk.
ID number 11729, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to establish the 2024 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This ordinance would add Director of Public Works and Engineering to the Department of Community Services. This would permit the city to reorganize DCS and realize efficiencies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All, all right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right.
The hearing will be on.
So the hearing date for this ordinance will be on February 4th, 2025. All right, we have another ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk?
ID number 11689, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number, ID number 11689. As the clerk had just read, this is to amend a current ordinance. What we're looking to do is at the Broad Street Garage to designate the top section level as non-resident parking. Currently, there are 128 spaces designated for non-residents. There are 43 resident permit spaces. As we have, since we've opened up the Broad Street East Parking Lot, which is the ground-level parking, that has given us, we have regained back 32 spaces and that is currently designated for resident parking. So by opening up those spaces, we felt like it was, because we have a huge demand, being a commuter town, from non-residents to have more parking. And obviously, this does generate some revenue because we charge non-resident parking a lot more than we do resident parking. So I moved to, moved this ordinance for introduction.
Second. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet? Ms. Hamlet? I'm sorry?
We're just introducing this.
Just, did you have a question or comment?
On the process or on the ordinance? We're just introducing it. We'll have the hearing in two weeks.
Aye. Okay. Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, we have another ordinance for introduction from the Community Programs and Parking Services. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance?
Yes, ID 11702, an ordinance to amend the code, Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, containing the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. As the clerk mentioned, this is the ordinance number, ID number 11702. This is an ordinance to amend our current membership fees at the Aquatic Center as well as the golf course green fees. The last time the Aquatic Center and the golf course fees were raised were in 2016. Membership increases in 2016 were approximately 5%. Even with a 5% increase this year, in each membership category, Summit would remain one of the most affordable aquatic facilities, aquatic facility options in the surrounding area. I'd like to move this ordinance for introduction.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're on to the resolution portion of our meeting. We've got a few from Finance this evening, and why don't you take us, take it out. Councilwoman Toth?
Okay, I'm going to defer to Mr. Smallwood on the first.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11693. This resolution transfer, oh, I'm sorry, I should read it. Authorized transfer of appropriations as of 1, January 21, 2024, operating budget. This resolution transfers funds from 2024 operating budget as of 12/31/2024 with a balance to operating accounts with insufficient funds. The total amount transferred out of, the total amount transferred must equal the total amount transferred in. These transfers are allowed only during the last two months of a fiscal year and the first three months of the succeeding year.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, this time, are there any comments from the public on this resolution? Okay, comments from council? Councilwoman Toth?
Yes, I'm deferring to, I'm deferring to Mr. Smallwood on this one, because I'm going to vote against this resolution. This was funding for Hometown Television. That is not emergency funding. I believe procedurally, it should have been part of the regular budgeting process and should have been handled in that manner.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right, I think we're going to need a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Nay.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving along to Finance number two, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11694. It is titled, as a, as a resolution authorizing issuance of not exceeding $170,000 special emergency notes. This is not an emergency, and we're not issuing notes. So it takes a bit of an explanation. This comes out of the pandemic. Summit lost significant amounts of parking revenue, and if I do the math quickly, I believe it's $850,000 that we were able to issue these emergency notes in 2021, and we are paying them back ratably over five years. This is the last $170,000 tranche, and it's a bit of a two-step authorize, passing this resolution allows us to set aside the funding so we can pay off the notes, I believe, next year, if I've got that right. But feel free to correct me, please, Administrator Baldwin.
Through you, Council President. We are, in fact, issuing a note
Okay.
for $170,000. So what this allowed us to do was, over five years, they call it a special emergency. The state allowed it for revenue because of the losses that municipalities were subject to during COVID, especially those of us who had parking utilities. So over five years, we pay back $170,000 a year. So each year, there is $170,000 budgeted in the parking utility to pay the note, and so we renew it each year at $170,000 left. Next year will be, in fact, the last payment on that.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open this up for comments from the public. Comments from council? I like your emergency, non-emergency. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Finance number three, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11682. I get the long titles. Establish procedure authorizing special tax appeal attorney upon advice of and after request from tax assessor to file corrective appeals, counter petitions, and counter claims, and stipulations of settlement with the Union County Tax Board and the New Jersey Tax Court. We do this annually. We, the city hires an attorney to represent us on tax appeals, and as the resolution title suggests, to file counter claims when appropriate. And this, you know, we, we save more than we spend on this attorney. So I move this resolution for adoption.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance number four, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11722, to authorize a shared service agreement with the Borough of Madison for information technology support services, not to exceed $54,454.32. This is a six-month agreement. We've been sharing an IT specialist with, with the Borough of Madison for some time, but he is going to work full-time for Madison, so this buys us six months to come up with another solution. And in the meantime, we'll still have his services.
A second.
Comments from the public?
Yes, Council President. So
Public's first. Wait your turn. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Boyer?
There's so many benches in between, you know, the people and the mic and, yes, so we have six months to take a look at our cybersecurity posture, right? And I'm gonna engage and work with our business administrator, because I think there was events that happened in Hoboken with ransom attacks, and I think we, we need to really take a look at that and also take a look at having somebody full-time. I mean, I don't know if it even works anymore to have somebody part-time in the city doing all of our IT matters. So I think there's a lot of discussion, and we have, we have some, several months to do it, so. But I, I think we need to take that very seriously. I've had some conversations about people that will come in and, and review our cybersecurity posture for free, because we live in an amazing town with smart people and had some good phone calls. So I'm excited to talk to you about it, Tammy. Thanks.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Just something that I mentioned earlier, which was the $1,500 with the additional insurance fee. We may just want to double-check with Megan Champney on that, because as I kind of read into the further details, it doesn't look like they can add us as an additional insured, so I don't know if we would owe them that $1,500 by January 15. And then I guess my only other question is, I guess it's a mute point, because it's only six months, but I can't, if somebody can justify the $614 and $77 base monthly charge, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, but I guess it's only six months, so I just don't understand what that, what are we paying for there, right? We're, they're giving us hours, so it doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
I think I can answer it.
Go ahead. Thanks, Matt.
It covers not only the location, the equipment, but also the personnel, because it's the joint service with all the dispatchers.
No, no, no.
This is the IT.
Oh, the IT. I can answer that, too. What that does is they, they, they give you 24-hour, 7-hour coverage, in case you do have, not just ransom, any type of shutdown. And you guys have been in this for, I can't even tell you how long, because I also represent Madison. You guys have been in the shared service with Madison probably in excess of a decade to consolidate and share services for the IT support, because you don't need it every day, but you do need people if there is a crash, a virus, you know, just, for example, if your internet goes down, you have to reset all passwords, everything. That's why they're there for.
Right, I get that, but there's also other charges for, if they, if we use them for X number of hours passed, you know, on a weekend, or, so I guess it's just, I wish they would explain that base monthly charge.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess, that it's just, it's the cost that they pay the people overtime for personnel, because they have to come in on the weekends, too.
Council, Council President, I mean, don't they, they do our Oprah requests as well, right? Don't they, they do, they pull emails for us and everything that, that we need, so they support the city clerk's office and administration, which is my point. We've been using them for over a decade. Technology has changed drastically, and I think our city clerk would agree that having someone on site to help with these thousands of Oprah requests would be beneficial, not only to cybersecurity issues that, that happen that are daily that we don't even know about, so.
Yes, Ms. Baldwin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Council President. I'll take a crack at this, Councilwoman Hamlet. The insurance piece for the $1,500, that is, their policy went up, so they prorated it, and that $1,500 is what they say is our share of the increase in their policy. So that's how they're handling that. Oftentimes, when you enter into a shared service and you are the municipality supplying the service, you get a little bit of something for that. That may be, without me going, having done the research on it, that might be what that base charge is.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, the only thing I would say is, you know, I, I think this has been a very good valued relationship that the City of Summit has had for, as Mr. Giacobi says, I believe, for a decade. And the history around this was, you know, with technology looming, we could go down the route of having a chief information officer, have staff, or we could go with the shared service, and it just made much more sense for our needs at the time to go with the shared service. And I, I think, I think in, both at the time and, and also with 2020 hindsight, it's been a very good relationship that the city's had with, with Madison around this. So I fully support the resolution. I agree, though, with Councilman Boyer, times always change, and we should always revisit something that worked yesterday doesn't mean it'll work tomorrow. So it's worth having a review, and I think that this six-month window offers that review, so. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Finance number five, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, finally, a short one. This resolution is ID 11719, authorizing accrued time payout to a fire, retiring fire department employee. The gentleman is retiring, and we should pay him, you know, his, his bank's personal days. So I move this, this resolution for, for, yeah, I would say
Adoption.
For adoption, thank you.
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President, does the, the amount that the retiring firefighter, do we need to make that public, that they're?
It's in the packet.
It is. Okay, I wasn't sure if it was only in the closed session packet, or?
I believe it was in the packet.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
So the question is, it's, it's, it's a nominal amount.
It's a nominal amount.
Yeah, I, I don't know, because I don't want people at home saying, well, how much is this person getting, right?
No.
They're owed it, but I just, you know.
It's not a problem to disclose the amount at all. It's not, that, I mean, under the Open Public Records Act, people can Oprah people's salaries, stipends, et cetera. So the payout for a retiring firefighter for the money that's due and owing is absolutely, could be disclosed.
Sure. So I'll just round, $3,700.
Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along. All right, Capital Projects and Community Services, number one, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11728. This is an important step in our round four obligation, and this resolution commits to the fourth round present and prospective need, affordable housing obligations. The City of Summit has demonstrated a history of voluntary compliance, as evidenced by the third round. For reasons set forth in this resolution, the mayor and common council hereby commit to the DCA fourth round present need rehabilitation obligation of 59 and the DCA fourth round prospective need, new construction obligation of 345, as described in this resolution, subject to all reservations of rights, which specifically include, without limitation, the following. There's three items here, which are the right to adjust the city's fair share obligations based on a windshield survey or similar survey, a vacant land adjustment, a durational adjustment, and all other applicable adjustments permitted in accordance with applicable COA regulations or other applicable law, and the right to revoke or amend this resolution in the event of a successful legal challenge or legislative change to the amended FHA, and the right to contrary position or adjust its fair share obligations in the event of a third-party challenge to the city's fair share obligations. I would like to move this resolution for adoption.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, at this time, I'll take comments from the public.
Sorry.
Come on up.
No comment, question. I'm Andrew Walker. I'm Andrew Walker from 242 Ken Place Boulevard. Can we just get a, a watered-down explanation of what you just said, Commissioner, or Councilperson? Thanks.
Yeah, we have our, our planner here, Joe Burgess. I think what we'll do is, if there are other questions from the public, he'll, he'll consolidate them, and we'll answer all of them after the end of public comments section.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public or questions? All right, Mr. Burgess, you want to tackle that?
I appreciate Mr. Walker's ask of a watered-down explanation. I'll try to be brief. Every 10 years, the state of New Jersey publishes new housing need numbers for municipalities throughout the state. In this fourth round, which covers 2025 to 2035, the state has given Summit a number of 345 prospective need units. You have a choice at this moment to either accept that number, and the determination is really a function of whether or not the DCA has used the appropriate methodology as spelled out in the legislation. Our review of the information is that they have, in fact, used the proper methodology, which results in a number of 345, and we are obligated to file that determination with the state by the end of this month. And then, after that, we begin the preparation of the housing element and fair share plan, where we will undoubtedly, consistent with all of our prior rounds, seek a vacant land adjustment, which will substantially lower that number. But this is just the first step in a long process, which presumably, consistent with the legislation, will end with the adoption of our housing plan by the end of June of this year.
Great. While you're here, Mr. Burgess, I guess, if, if there's no other, we, I think we're closed, public comments, are there other comments or questions from council on this resolution? Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just end it, and just as Mr. Burgess mentioned, this is a one step in a multi-step process to get to June 30. And we have a bunch of obligations, including engaging with the planning board, to come up with a plan, et cetera. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that going forward?
Very briefly, what happens after January 31, any objectors to the selection of a number have the month of February to file an objection. We are not objecting to the number that has been promulgated for us, so consequently, we should not be receiving any objection. All the objections statewide, the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program will be reviewing, coming to a conclusion about those objections in the month of March. And then, following that, we proceed with the preparation of our housing plan, and we are, in fact, obligated to adopt that housing plan by the end of June, or if we don't meet that deadline, we may lose all immunity that deadline, we may lose all immunity from affordable housing litigation. So, it's important that we meet that, that deadline.
Great, thank you. All right, and no other comments? Here, see, any? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving later along to Capital Projects and Community Services, number two, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11620. Excuse me. Whereas Summit Downtown Inc. has offered to donate the funding to the city to install fencing and landscaping around Lot 1 on DeForest Avenue, and will enter into and manage the contract directly with Artistic Fence to install the fencing with an estimated value of $8,339.40, and with Castle Point Landscape Design for the landscaping with an estimated value of $15,620.81. Both Artistic Fence and Castle Point Landscape Design have been fully vetted by the city as contractors and meet all requirements which will allow them to work on public property. I would like to move this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Smallwood.
No, no, up to you. Thank you, Council President and Councilman Boyer. I, I guess I have a little concern about the, the wording of this, and maybe I'm just reading into the words, but "will enter into and manage the contract directly with Artistic Fence." Is this something that SDI is going to be managing without the city, or, because in my feeling, because this is city property, this is something that DPW should be managing?
So, Administrator Baldwin or Director Schreger, we, we had a couple of, I guess, we had a couple iterations around this, around prevailing wage, we had a couple of questions from the QPA. So, do you want to talk a little bit about, about the process, how this project will be managed? Or who prefers?
Sure, through you, Council President. Yes, while it might detail who manages it, we obviously and absolutely would have staff out there to see it. I mean, the fence will just take a day, we'd have someone out there to make sure the layout's what we want, that the fence is what we want, the quality is what we want, and the same for the landscaping itself. So, in terms of managing the actual construction, yes, we will oversee it, because then we own it, so it doesn't help us to accept, you know, dead shrubs or fencing that's crooked or in the wrong spot, so if that helps alleviate some concerns.
Yes, it does, thank you. The other concern is about the quality of the fencing. Is this the same type of quality of fencing that we have on Summit Avenue that's across from the Broad Street Garage that we tried to put up, that we put up to prevent commuters crossing the street at, at any point on Summit Avenue? Because in, in my view, that, that, you bump into it the wrong way and it bends. That area where we're putting this fencing up now, I, I believe has a lot, or will have, especially during the farmer's market, have a lot more, you know, pedestrian traffic. And I'm more concerned about us putting up this fencing, even though the city's not paying for it, well, technically, they are, since it's Summit Downtown Inc.'s taxpayer dollars. My concern is the quality of the fencing itself. Could you, could you speak to the, the actual quality itself, and is it the same that we have on Summit Avenue?
Yes, again, through you, Council President. So, the fence would be essentially the same as the Summit Avenue fencing, just so it's easier to maintain, and I don't want to say stockpile, but just easier to get it, and that we have familiarity with it when it needs repair or replacement. So, in that regard, yes. The Summit Avenue fence, for the length it's been up and for the abuse it takes, I mean, it's right up on the curb, so it is getting snowplow pushed, so it's done reasonably well. We have had to repair some. We feel this one here with the way it's set up, could an errant car hit it? Yes. Could, you know, kids put too much weight on jumping over it? Yes, but I, I think it'll hold up pretty well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
So, for the last, as I can remember in my short public office life, SDI has sent out a notification to candidates in the summer. I had a question for our city solicitor the other day and sent an email. Last summer, this notification said, while our events happen on public property, when the event is in progress, SDI has set rules in place in order to make the attendees' experience at our event the most enjoyable experience possible. For this reason, we do not allow any political campaigning within the confines of our event. For example, while we don't disallow politicians campaigning outside of the farmer's market, we do not permit them to do so inside the market. The same is true for our other events downtown, such as the Arts and Cars and Family Fun Night. As a Summit City Council member, I, you know, I, I, I respect what SDI does. I'm all about, you know, community engagement, and I'm all about the business owners and everything, but I just want to make sure, as we put up fencing around it, the council, it's still a public space, right? And the council sets the rules in terms of what goes on in public spaces, and, right? SDI, having this fence up and confining this space doesn't open the door to SDI having some internal policies where they can adopt and prevent people from campaigning or other forms of public speech.
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yeah, please. I have an opinion on it, but I'm not a lawyer. Mr. Giacobi.
So, there's a, a little document that we all enjoy in the United States called the U.S. Constitution.
I was gonna go there.
The First Amendment provides for the freedom of speech. One of the highest forms of speech in our democracy is political speech. So, you can have reasonable time, place, amount of restrictions on it. This would be a prior restraint on free speech. You can't do that, you can't prohibit it, and it's taking place on public lands. So, just like you couldn't prohibit people from, you know, you can, there's things, you can prohibit campaigning on school property while schools in session, that's permitted. That's a reasonable time, place, amount of restriction, because the children aren't voters generally. But here, that would not be prohibited, and we, we addressed that back in August. So, just because you put up a fence doesn't in any way take away the fact that it's still on public lands. And so, people, members, whether they're citizens of Summit or not, they have the right to be on public lands and exercise their First Amendment rights.
I'd like to thank our city solicitor for that explanation, and based on that, I'm in support of the beautification of that parking lot.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toth.
You may have raised your hand first, Councilmember Palowski. And I speak because I did spend seven years on the board of Summit Downtown Inc. as its treasurer, and once, that, that, there is already a fence around the farmer's market, its first iteration was one of those orange plastic silt fences. I mean, the purpose has been to keep the market, to keep people basically out of the farmer's market before it opens in the morning. People are so anxious to come to our farmer's market that they honestly are there before 7, 8 o'clock in the morning on Sundays. And the vendors need the time, the space, they've got the, the vehicles, they need to be, to be able to set up and set up safely. So, we originally, there was originally an extraordinarily ugly orange silt fence. Director Schre, or, you know, Mr. Schreger, at some point kindly replaced that with basically a beach fence, the kind that keeps the sand out, which is better looking, but still not particularly attractive. And SDI, for years, had been advocating for a more attractive fencing solution, something we would all be proud of, to keep the farmer's market, you know, safe as, as, as the vendors were setting up. And it, this reads to me as the first step, they're, they're trying to secure the most common way that people come into the market when they're not supposed to. And if this works, then they can, as, as they suggest, they work their way around the, the entire parking lot. But this is definitely an aesthetic upgrade over what, what there is now. And it'll also help provide additional landscaping along the alley. I mean, there are two ways people enter downtown Summit. From the train station, they see the liquor store, or in a parker, park, parker shop, ah, sorry, shopper parking lot, and they see the alley. So, any visual upgrade we can provide, I think, is a good thing. And because SDI is funded by downtown property owners, not by general city revenues, this really is no cost to, direct cost to the city taxpayers.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. Ms. Toth answered some of my questions. I still don't know why we really need to have a fence there. I've asked this question before. I, I accept your explanation, and certainly, it sounds like it's going to be a nicer fence than we have had over the past couple of years, but I don't know, we don't have fences at the other lots, and I kind of like that, so. How was it?
Other comments? Yeah, I, I would just wrap up saying, you know, I, I think it is, it would be an upgrade over, like, a dune fencing. If they do need it, it sounds like there is a rational reason why they, a fence makes sense with, for that particular lot, it's where the farmer's market obviously is. I do, I'm, I'm happy to see SDI spending money to beautify parts of our downtown. I think there are other parts of our downtown which I would love them to focus on and spend some of their money on doing that as well. So, this is, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm happy that this is happening. I look forward to seeing more proposals, to spend more money that they have on doing that. So, I, I do support this resolution. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Capital Projects and Community Services, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11683. The city regularly utilizes onsite vegetative waste grinding services throughout the year. This process is also known as tub grinding, which is utilized to grind branch, brush, and leaf debris that is collected by the city, as well as vegetative debris that is brought to the transfer station by residents and commercial landscapers. The city's current two-year contract is expiring, and the department bid this service out instead of extending the current contract. Four bids were received. On November 13th, the lowest bidder, Frank Galbraith and Son, offered a half-day rate of $3,000 per day and a full-day rate of $3,850 per day. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Boyer.
I couldn't help but read this, Director Schreger, and think, we can't just ship this out somewhere, like, we, do we have to spend $3,000 a day to grind it up? We can't put it in a, pay someone to come and get it, like, any other garbage or anything like that? Is there, yeah, I'll let you.
Yes, through you, Council President. Excellent question. So, about a decade ago, that is what we did. So, we would collect it and then haul it off, and the price typically ran $50,000, $70,000 just to haul it off. So, based on last year using this service, and now I know the day rate makes this, you know, seem like it's astronomical, but we really don't use it till later in the year. And, you know, if we do have an event, I don't want to jinx it, but that creates a lot of vegetative waste for us. So, last year, we used about $70,000. Now, the difference is, one, without hauling it and just dumping it somewhere, it's friendlier to the planet, but now, we're also producing a product that the city and its residents can use. So, essentially, we're paying the same, but now, we have an end product that has some use to the, to the citizens, so. So, but, but great question, and, and yes, that is what we used to do. And now, you'll see that finding places to actually accept this, because there's rotunda across the river, rumors, it did sell, so we don't know how long they'll be in business. So, this is definitely a commodity that's, that's good to have, the ability to, to create this and to not have to just truck it off, so.
Thank you for your explanation.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thanks for your question, Councilman Boyer. I thought the same thing. So, I've been asking Director Schreger more about vegetative grinding today than I probably ever wanted to, to know. But the one thing that we're going to look a little closer at in, in the next few months is, you know, what we looked at in the last week or so over this was, how much did we actually bring in from contractors, landscapers, who are buying coupons at the transfer station? I think last year, we brought in $18,000. We also looked at the historical use in the last seven or 10 years of, you know, I think six or seven years ago, we were spending $50,000, now, it's kind of gone up to $70,000. But especially with the closure of, of a nearby place there, looking at how competitive we are and, and, you know, with some of those other entities. So, I think it's a good question, and we'll be talking more about that in committee as well.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski.
So, just to give a little perspective, right, because people are just looking at this and seeing numbers, Director Schreger's right, it does create a product. And I don't know, maybe it curies for a year, and then they, they move it around, but there are piles of free mulch there. I have mulched my entire property with it a number of times, and I'll tell you what, it's not al- always even there. So, people in this town are using it, and it, it seems like the numbers make sense. I, I like having it.
So, how do you get the mulch?
I, I borrow a trailer from Mr. Kevin O'Connor, thank you, if you're out there. And I, I got a pitchfork and, get your wheelbarrow out?
What's your hourly rate? I'm gonna hire you. All right, other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects and Community Services, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I think we should use some of the, the product to put on our tree, tree wells. Next year, we could get a couple wheelbarrows. Okay, so, this is ID 11704. This is a resolution, whereas NJDOT is requesting a resolution in support of their project to rehabilitate the bridges on Route 124 on the northern border of Summit with Chatham. A kickoff meeting was held on November 6th, 2024, with representatives of the city and NJDOT, and I recommend supporting, moving this resolution.
Second.
I think they have a picture somewhere, but I don't know if it's up, but it's, I don't think we need it, Rosie, but in case anybody had any questions, we have some further documentation.
It's on the?
It's in the packet.
It's on the packet, on the web, right?
Oh, we did get it in the packet. Oh, perfect, okay.
I don't think it's here, but.
We have it here.
Yeah, okay. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects and Community Services, number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Council President, can I bundle the last four?
Yes.
Yes, please do.
Council President, this is ID 11700, 11699, 11717, 11716. These are declaring vacancies in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, as discussed in closed chats, closed session, Recreation Parks and Shade Tree Unit. The Assistant Foreman, the second one, is declaring a vacancy in the DCS Division of Public Works, Recreation Park Shade Tree Maintenance Worker. The third is declaring a vacancy, again, as discussed in closed session, Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, Lead Driver, Sanitation Unit. And the fourth is declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, the Roads Unit. I would like to move all four of these resolutions.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Boyer, please.
We're all full of comments tonight. So, as most of the council knows, I've been chomping at the bit on this for about a year now. I would like to really see Summit expand their reach in terms of employment and diversity within Summit's workforce. These are, these are good jobs. These jobs puts kids into college, right? I've seen it. I've had my experience in high school. I, I know people, dads, moms, who've worked for the, the City of Summit and put their kids through college, their kids are doing well now, they have kids and everything. I, you know, I really would like to see our Human Resources Department expand the reach of who we're marketing employment to. Our, our, our chart, our employment chart is, you know, yeah, I'll leave it at that, so.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I, I, just to wrap up, I would agree with Councilman Boyer, and I know Councilwoman Thompson and I have spoken about this, and it's one of our initiatives for this year that I think admin-
for this year that I think Admin, the Admin Committee is going to spearhead working with our human resource area to make sure we cast a wider net. I mean, I think, obviously, we want to hire the best people for Summit and I think the way you get the best people is you cast a wide net. So the best people know about these positions, can apply for them, and we should all want that. And so I think it's a great initiative and I look forward to seeing what the Admin Committee comes back with.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, moving right along, Safety and Health. Councilman Boyer, number one.
See, Councilwoman Hamlet bundled all of those and now I'm not prepared. You know, that's not fair. I'll get there, one sec. Okay, here we go. Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11669. The resolution on the alcohol tests, 9510. Okay, so the state of New Jersey has mandated that all law enforcement agencies transition from the alcohol test 7110 breathalyzer, which has been in use for more than 20 years. The new test, 9510, or they will transition to the new test, 9510, by 2025. This upgrade is critical to ensuring compliance with state regulations and maintaining the accuracy and reliability of the breathalyzer test. The Summit Police Department has secured a quote for the new machine at a cost of $22,822.50. To mitigate the financial burden of this transition, the state of New Jersey has suspended its typical 50% reimbursement rule and will instead provide 100% reimbursement for the purchase through the Drunk Driving Enforcement Fund, the DDEF. Currently, the Summit Police Department has $8,382.44 available in its DDEF accounts with an additional $13,044.90 held by the state, which will be reimbursed shortly after the purchase. This allows the city to offset nearly the entire cost, leaving a financial, the final net expense of only $1,395.16. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman, Councilman Palowski.
Yeah, I see that Drager Inc. makes these $22,000 breathalyzers. Does anybody know if they're publicly traded? Want to buy some stock in Drager Inc.?
Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Councilman Boyer, but do I feel like I remember this being in our budget last year or was that something else? Do you remember?
I don't, I don't recall.
Remember, Tammy?
Through you, Council President. Actually, when we did the capital presentation, the capital budget presentation, Chief Zagorski had that in the budget, but now that we have matching DDEF funds, we're only paying for a small portion. So I've moved it out of the capital and over into their equipment line in the 2025 budget.
I was either dreaming it or remembering it. Okay. So we got kind of lucky regarding this grant. Okay, thank you very much.
Good question.
Great. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto Safety and Health, number two, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11724. Authorized sponsorship of the No to Protect Program presented by the Department of Homeland Security. This is, this has been a very close to my heart. I've been pushing this for a while now and as part of the partnership between the city of Summit and the Summit Board of Education, have arranged for special agents from the Department of Homeland Security to deliver the No to Protect Program at the Law NC Johnson Summit Middle School Auditorium on January 27, 2025. The No to Protect Program is a national public awareness campaign led by Homeland Security that aims to prevent and combat online child sexual exploitation and abuse, educate attendees on how to report online enticement and victimization, provide resources and support for victims, survivors, and their families. The event will take place in the auditorium and as part of the approval process, the Summit Board of Education requires a certificate of insurance, naming the board as an additional insured. This resolution seeks council approval for the city to sponsor the event and authorize the city's risk manager to issue the required certificate of insurance. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
I just want to applaud Councilman Boyer for this initiative. This isn't just something that's out there, right? Councilman Boyer identified the problem, he found the program, and he made all this happen. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I just would reiterate, you know, one of the primary responsibilities of government is to keep our citizens safe. And so I completely agree with Councilman Palowski's comments. Thank you, Councilman Boyer, for driving this from start almost to the finish, but I know you'll get it over the finish because it's going to happen at the end of the month. So thank you so much for doing this.
And thank the council for their support in this. I appreciate it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Safety and Health, number three, Councilman Boyer.
All right, last one, triple double. 11735, excuse me, Council President, this is 11735. Approve the lease agreement between New Providence Summit and Millburn Emergency Dispatch Center and the Borough of New Providence. So, Mountain Valley Emergency Communications Center. Established in 2014, the Mountain Valley Emergency Communications Center unified dispatch services for the Borough of New Providence, the city of Summit, in the township of Millburn with a contract with Springfield. Its mission included providing centralized emergency reporting, coordinating law enforcement, fire, and EMS responses. The current status, as of 2024, only Summit and Millburn remain as full members. And Springfield and New Providence have left the program and is with Union County's Regional Dispatch Center, which offers lower costs and economies of scale, creating challenges for the Mountain Valley Emergency Communications sustainability. The council today is considering extending the lease with New Providence to maintain current services, but discussions about the future of the dispatch services are underway. They have begun, actually. But key considerations for our next steps will include service quality, costs versus benefits, and location options. Exploring a shared agreement with Millburn to possibly bring dispatch back to Summit's firehouse or transitioning to Union County's system. But again, we have a lot of work to do to get there, to make that decision. However, right now, currently, extending these lease, this lease provides sustainable, sustainability, excuse me, while Summit continues a path forward, ensuring, ensuring that any decision balances cost savings with maintaining high-quality public safety services. So I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
All right, I would just echo what Councilman Boyer said. This, this was a great idea a dozen years ago. In fact, it was a brand-new idea to combine towns and look at a shared service. The original idea was to provide excellent quality, service people in emergencies, but to do it at a lower cost. It made sense if we could go from the original three members to add a fourth member and a fifth member and a sixth member, so we could build higher economies of scale. That did not happen. In fact, sadly, over the last year, we've had diseconomies of scale because we lost one of the original members. So this is pretty expensive. There's a consent agenda item later on here that's going to give, talk about paying our quarterly fee, which is $300 and some odd thousand dollars. So we're paying currently over $1.2 million for our, our dispatch. And I completely agree with Councilman Boyer. You have to look at that about what you get. But clearly, the county provides a service that is cheaper, that other municipalities have seemed to make that decision, that it's a, it's a good service for the money they spent. We have work to do, including the fact that currently the counties, they're not accepting new people, new towns. So that's a bit of a problem. But that doesn't mean, but this does give us a window to really dig in, explore the cost benefit of staying with our own system versus exploring something different. But, you know, we live in a time where there are real calls on our taxpayer dollar, what we spend. There's a lot of people who want good services and such. And this, I think, if I look at how we're set up, to me, this is one of these big opportunities that we can really get our hands around what we need versus costs out there that we can save a significant amount of money for the taxpayer if we can find something that has more economies of scale than what we currently are using now. So, so I think this is great. The lease does have a six-month cancellation option to it. We're not going to figure this out with, in the next couple of months. It's going to take a little bit longer than that. So we do have optionality, at least this lease gives us that, to come up with a, a good plan going forward. So I support the resolution.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're moving along to Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilman, or number one, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11736. The Department of Community Programs is requesting a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Union County Department of Community Development. We will be requesting $5,000 for the Senior Connection Bus, along with $10,000 for the Share the Fun Club After School Program. This grant has allowed the DCP to expand their program offerings over the years and to continue to help fund our Senior Connection Bus. I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Boyer.
You know, I support this totally. I, but again, looking at the budget, wasn't, wasn't there a nonprofit that did this prior to the city taking this on, the transportation of the seniors?
The senior bus?
Yes.
Yeah, this was a Junior League-funded program. They did it for years and years and years. And then they needed some help because the bus was starting to break down and they, and so the city, over time, effectively took the program over. And the Junior League does lots of great things in town, so they've moved on to doing other great things in town, but we now own the senior bus.
Got you. I just, personally, I think we, perhaps, we're a volunteer town, right? I think the mayor just said it before. You know, as a council, I think maybe we can look at a lot of, a lot of this stuff that has been shifted over to the city government and see if we could put it back in the hands of some of our volunteers and, you know, it's just an opportunity to just take a look. Seems like over the years, a lot of what our volunteers have done, either they moved on from it and the city picked it up, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, it builds up over time. So maybe that's another opportunity to look and see, you know, who can maybe step up and help out with, you know, our senior transportation or, you know, even other things. Department of Community Programs, love them so much, but they have a huge budget. So, yeah, that's it.
Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Community Programs and Parking Services, number two, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11737. This is the Local Recreation Improvement Grant. Funds and repairs and upgrades to public recreational facilities with a recommended maximum of $100,000. The city of Summit's Department of Community Programs is seeking $100,000 to replace aging equipment at Memorial Playground with safer and more accessible structures for children, including those with special needs. A resolution is required to authorize this grant application and I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Community Programs and Parking Services, number three, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11691, to declare a vacancy in the Parking Services Agency. Two employees have been promoted, leaving the staff assistant position open, and I move to approve this resolution.
Right here, second.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along to Law and Labor, number one, Councilman Palowski.
So I'm recused for both of these. I wanted to just step out.
All right, we'll call you back.
Sure.
All right, that means it's going to fall on you, Councilwoman Tote.
I know. I hope I'm up to this. Thank you, Council President.
Let's wait for him to leave.
Okay. Okay. Resolution ID 11673 is to amend our professional services agreement for 2024 with special counsel to pay an additional $10,000. There's a backstory here. When the Broad Street West managers sued City of Summit in the fall of 2023, the, we gave the attorneys a budget of $50,000. And then in the spring of 2024, the Broad Street managers submitted a vague, large Oprah request to the city of Summit rather than engage in legal discovery. On, on, you know, with advice, the city went back to, to the Broad Street West managers, said, this is vague, this is over broad, please refine, refine your Oprah request, and instead they sued. That incurred additional legal fees and I guess in the past week, that suit has been thrown out of court, but we still have to pay the lawyers. So this resolution would pay the attorney's fees for the additional services they rendered last year.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President?
Councilman Smallwood.
Yeah, I, I think this would just go to show that Oprah requests are expensive.
The good, the good news though is, from, from a cost shifting perspective, the legislature did make changes to Oprah. So this was filed right before the legislature made the change, where if you got it wrong, and basically getting it wrong is if somebody files a suit and that lawsuit is the catalyst for turning documents over, you have to pay the other side's attorney's fees. So we prevailed in that. Now what the law says is that if they file a lawsuit, it's not the catalyst anymore. You have to, they have to demonstrate that there was like really obstructionist, really based on, just like a tease, not turning over documents, hiding documents. It's a much higher burden, there'll be a lot less fee shifting in Oprah's, which is actually a huge benefit to towns because there was like an entire cottage industry that makes a lot of money off of, or did, off of Oprah's. But luckily, the city prevailed here.
That's good news. Other comments? Councilman Boyer.
Just to clarify, our city clerk has never hit a document before in her life, so I just want to.
By the book.
That's right.
Always by the book.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Law and Labor, number two, Councilwoman Tote.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 11674. This is Resolution 11674, authorizing professional fees for, for special counsel for 2025 of seventy-five thousand dollars. Prices are going up. And although we, you know, prevailed in that Oprah lawsuit, there's still another lawsuit going on. Discovery is getting underway and we hope that we don't have to come back. If, if we ask for this much at the outset of the year, hopefully we won't have to come back and ask for more. So I'm, I move this resolution for adoption.
Go here, second.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Broad Street West, the gift that keeps on giving. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back, Councilman Palowski. All right, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, comments from the public on our consent agenda? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Can we just pull 11695?
This is the joint meeting quarterly assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Pull that one. Any other comments from council? All right, so we're voting to approve all the consent agenda except for finance number one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, consent agenda, finance number one, Councilwoman Toth, would you like to introduce?
Good. Actually, I, I was not prepared for this one. Could I?
You shouldn't be. It's okay.
Could I toss this to, to our city administrator?
I'm happy to take it. I can explain what the problem, why I called it.
We need to introduce it.
We need to intro, I, well, I am introducing, okay, I'll introduce the agenda 11695 to authorize the, the joint meeting quarterly assessment.
Perfect.
But that's about as far as I can go with it.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. At this time, since, is there, City Administrator Baldwin, do you have any info on this that you'd like to say at this time?
Through you, Council President. I'm not sure what Councilwoman Hamlet's question is. This is a annual bill that we get, the joint meeting passed a resolution. I know that Councilwoman Hamlet is the liaison to the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties. So she may have more information. But they do provide an assessment and a breakdown to all thirteen member municipalities. The payment is due February 6th, so it's pretty timely. And I would open it to Councilwoman Hamlet for any questions she might have for me that I might be able to answer.
All right, let me, let me just ask the public if they have any comments at this time? All right, comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Sure. My computer's frozen on me, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First, I just got this email today as a member of the joint meeting, I think it was today. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Number one, the cost of the quarterly payments is six hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Secondly, the dates, there's a couple scribners errors. So the first quarter payment will be due on February 28th. The second quarter payment will be due on April 21st. The third quarter payment is due July 21st. And my computer just broke on me, so I can't tell you what the fourth one is. But I either just wanted to get it correct on the record with the dates and the amounts, or we can table it till another time, as I just got the information. But I also, we don't have the resolution from the joint meeting, so I don't know if that's important or we can put it in later. But since the dates have moved on to February 28th, it's really.
Yeah, through you, Council President. The problem was that we usually get it on the last meeting in January. I literally got it, I think on Friday was when we all received it. I was hounding them. I was the squeaky wheel every day, saying, "Where is it, where is it, where is it?" I think they were getting annoyed with me, but I wanted to get it on the agenda. So I may have, I know that the numbers are right because I've gone through them four times. But I may have missed a date, so I think that could be a scribner's error and we can just change. Yeah. And also the resolution, they just sent that, so I didn't have it in time for anything. I didn't even have it.
We just got it today.
Right.
So I don't know, is it just for transparency purposes if, you know, it's due February 28th?
The way I would correct the, the, the current resolution is, I'd leave it the way it is and just say on or about the date set forth.
Okay.
Because the date that's set forth in here is earlier than the one that Councilwoman Hamlet just said. So if you say on or about the date set forth, you're fine.
And then can we attach the actual resolution to the minutes for the next?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, perfect.
You can attach it to this. So just say, in accordance with the attached resolution, on or about.
Great. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? I, I've just seen as we're talking about the joint meeting. You know, we, it's called a joint meeting because I think there are thirteen communities. Is that right, Mr. Schager?
Yes.
Yeah, as part of this, we are equity owners. In our sewage treatment plant, Elizabeth is a, they, they are customer, I guess. But this is where everything flows downhill, to the treatment plant right next to the, the bridge, is it the, the Gothel's Bridge down there in Elizabeth. Just as a point of fact, I know Aaron's worked on this a lot, where we've done a ton of work on our, our stormwater management and our systems. A lot of the fees that are paid, or are paid by the members are based off of flow. And one thing we've worked really, really hard on is to separate out our stormwater management from getting into our sewer system. Because that's water that we would then have to pay for. And our percentage of the joint meeting payments, because we've done that over time, has really gone down relative to other towns. So I think it's a real compliment for forward planning and thinking from our engineering department, manages our sewer system. It's a real tax savings for our community. And just as you're aware, you could not replicate this system today to actually have the towns own something like this. It would be just cost prohibitive. But because Summit and these other towns did this in the twenties, I believe, this, this system works and it's a great asset for our community. So, all right, so with that, oh yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Real quick, I just want to mention for those of you who are really looking for light reading tonight, at the, at the end of your council packet is the actual joint meeting audit from last year. So in case you're really, really bored, some goodies at the end of the packet for you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that is it for our business. City Professionals, Aaron and Marcus taken off already, I guess. You guys have a great evening, Chief, as well. You're, you're hanging, okay. Protecting us as always. So at this time, I'd like to open up our meeting for public comments. For anything that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come on up, just state your name and your address, and please try and hold your comments to three minutes or less.
Could I ask you, please, if I asked?
Yeah, absolutely.
Apologize.
Yeah, no, no, no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Larry Cohen. I live in Fanwood, New Jersey, and I'm a volunteer for Associated Humane Societies, the largest animal shelter network in the state. You've seen me before, but in the spirit of a new year and a new council, I am back to ask you once again to pass a resolution supporting State Bill S 2511 slash A 4051, which would prohibit pet stores, shelters, and rescues from, from the retail sale of dogs, cats, or rabbits that they had purchased themselves for resale. What I emailed you this morning, if you had a chance to look at it yet, as well as what I've just passed out to you, is a pictorial and written description of the current state of the pet selling puppy store industry in New Jersey. And it's important that I point out to you that each of you has a different Page One. So the pictures on one person's packet is completely different from the pictures of the other nine. And that's important to me because it shows that this is not a rare occurrence, what's going on with this partnership between pet stores and these puppy mills. It's prolific, it's systemic, and it needs to come to an end. Unfortunately, these puppy mills are not in New Jersey. And so we do not have legal reach for them. When the state overhauled its smoking laws, their efforts did not include legal efforts to get rid of tobacco farms in North Carolina. We can't do anything about the mills in Missouri and Iowa and NDM, et cetera, et cetera. So what we're trying to do is what we can to protect citizens and animals here in New Jersey. I'm not sure why you chose not to take this up last year, but I just want to make a couple of comments that may help as you consider it this year. First of all, as I was researching this, I came across, in tap into Summit, some discussion when you were considering marijuana dispensaries in town. And a couple of things stood out to me. Number one was that there was, there were statements that said that you have, in fact, in the past, on occasion, regulated businesses. You said it happens with fast food drive-through restaurants, it happens with strip malls. And the other thing was a quote that was part of a Q and A, I think, which said, "We considered whether we should permit a new use in town, and if so, whether we wanted to allow it with restrictions. We regulate all types of store and activities. Just because a use is permitted does not mean that we forego regulation." So I understand.
Just finish up.
I understand, you know, your reluctance to regulate things. But I would even argue that this is not about business. This is about animal cruelty. And whether or not these businesses that are doing this in plain sight really deserve to be protected and to have this privilege continued to be extended to them. It's a simple ask, it's, it's just a resolution. We're trying to get all of Union County. The two pet store owners in your town support this. Your two Assemblywomen are cosponsors of this. So I would please urge you to pass a resolution in support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment section of our hearing. At this time, we're going to go to council member comments and new business. How's your shot? Come on, I know people want to speak. Yes, Councilman Palowski, thanks for taking this out.
So I, we, we've been talking about Tatlock Lights. And we had a, what we call a town hall. But, you know, when we were at the town hall, I was thinking about a lot of things that have happened over the past year. And, you know, once these lights came out, you know, as, as a potentiality, I spent a lot of time down around Tatlock and in the Tatlock neighborhood during the football games, during other big events, just trying to, you know, see what happens down there and really how we can improve it. And it's not lost on me, at least, that, you know, there are some challenges that are down there. And we've taken a, a bunch of steps in safety to try to improve that. Some of the narrower roads, we put up single side of the street parking. We have encouraged successfully some of the youth programs who have special events down there to hire additional police officers. I have even called the police a couple of times, especially on Lewis, where people were loading and unloading where they shouldn't be, because that's a blind curve. So I'm gonna keep, keep looking at that. And one of the other things that bothered me about something that's happening in that neighborhood stemmed from my work on the Shade Tree Committee. There's a, there's a gap in the trees. I think it's really supposed to be trees really surrounding Tatlock to provide cover for the residents. And there is a big gap on Butler Parkway. And we had talked at Shade Tree, and I'd mentioned this to Michelle before, who's now on Shade Tree, if we could get some, some additional plantings there. But also, just kind of like maintaining some of the other wooded areas that are there. And with everything that's happening in Los Angeles, I know this isn't an area that are, that's really prone to forest fires, but even this summer during the drought, if you drove on Route 24, you saw trees and brush on fire. There are downed trees and there are downed branches. And as I continued along that street, you know, Martinsburg Park, it's supposed to be a park, right? I mean, I don't know if we've ever done anything to, to maintain that. And I don't know, I don't know what it would cost to do that or if it, this is maybe a community effort that we could pull together around Earth Day. There's, there's a tree out there, a fallen tree that's leaning up against another tree. And that must have been done by a human, but I'm not so sure it should be that way. So anyway, the point is, you know, we should all be looking for, for things around town that we can improve and, and I'll, we'll continue to look in that, that neighborhood in particular.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for everybody who came to the meeting tonight. But Councilman Palowski, I concur. We did have a meeting with a bunch of residents, gosh, was it a week ago or two weeks ago? I'm losing track of time. But the residents of that Tatlock area certainly came out. And I think it was very evident that we need to take every effort to unburden that neighborhood in whatever way we can. So, you know, I think maybe what we could even do is create a task force. We're looking at, number one, Tatlock Lights. We're looking at Canoe Brook Parkway sidewalks, which is a million-dollar project. The one thing everybody seems to have in common down there is people are going too fast. They're worried about kids going to school. They're worried about flooding. And it doesn't seem like a lot of them down there want the lights. But in any event, I think it's important for us as elected officials to take it really seriously. I've asked Director Schager to look at possibly lowering the speed limit there or look to what we could do to lower the speed limit in some of those areas down there to unburden that community. I think we need to take a really close look at those neighbors' concerns around speeding enforcement, game time, traffic patterns, and things like that. I think we have a lot of smart people in this community and we should work together to find a solution as we go through this light process, Council President. So that was my comment on that, Bob. Wasn't prepared to talk about that. But secondly, I'll be meeting with the Office of Homelessness Prevention on Friday. There's a few of us who are hopefully headed to LA in February to work on a bipartisan council panel for homeless prevention. So I'm excited to represent Summit and be a part of Union County, so stay tuned. But I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor said today. What a huge win for our homeless task force, for getting so many people housed. I thank Leah Griffith and the task force for just truly digging in. A lot of people that care, and, and it's just an exciting thing to be a part of. So thank you for all your hard work, for everybody who's contributed to that.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Calmerson.
Thank you. Was it Mr. Cohen that was up here? I'm new here, so I don't know quite all what we can do, but I'm going to look into it. And I just thank you for coming. Animals can't speak for themselves. So I thank you for coming and coming to our meeting and speaking up for them because they can't. So, so thank you.
Other comments from council?
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Boyer, please.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to second Councilwoman Calmerson's comment about Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, I read your email and you said, "I guess I didn't do a good enough job explaining what I'm asking you to do." And that caught my attention because I don't remember a lot of things, but I remembered that. And my, my question to you would be explaining the significance of the third-party sale of animals and we, the second-party, like. So you explained that you have the animal shops buy the animals and then they sell them, right? And that's something that you want to prevent, right? Yeah. So maybe we could have a conversation and you can explain to me the significance of that because I don't, I don't understand. But I am an animal lover. I got, my dog, Ally, is chilling at home right now, probably sleeping. Secondly, this weekend was an amazing weekend for celebration honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. The Unity Church services at the Presbyterian Church were, were amazing. I got an opportunity to go a little earlier to hear the rehearsal, just excellent, excellent voices. And then the following day, just to see the kids put together the Rock of Hopes and the placemats for the homeless and the other different things that they were doing with family members and everything was, was just a, was a phenomenal experience. I know our council president spoke at Fountain Baptist Church. Pilgrim Church had a celebration honoring Dr. Martin Luther King as well. So it was just two days of a lot of different events honoring a great man. You know, I play this for my, my kids every year, and it's one of, I believe, Dr. Martin Luther King's best speeches. And it is, what is your blueprint, what is, what is your life's blueprint? It is, it is, if you've never heard of it, go on YouTube, listen to it, listen to the words, they are great. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. encourages young people to build their lives with purpose, integrity, and excellence. He outlines three key principles for creating a strong life blueprint. Believe in your own self-worth, a commitment to excellence, and uphold love and justice. And he reminds the students that life may not always be easy, but perseverance, self-worth, and a commitment to doing good can lead to a fulfilling and impactful life. One thing that is, is always covered is, we're always looking at the government, you know, when, when we're looking at Dr. Martin Luther King, you know, the, the history of the government, the history of this. But, you know, I, I tend to want to ask the public. Each and every one of us can change the trajectory, the trajectory of someone's life. You know, in Summit, there are, we're surrounded by CEOs, directors, business owners, individuals that have the opportunity to give someone an opportunity. I mean, I, as a, as a manager in my own life, I do it all the time. If I meet somebody at a restaurant that I have a conversation with, I say, "Hey, man, what are you, you know, what are you doing? What are you doing for your, what are you doing for your career?" You know? I give them an opportunity, you know? Pass them a card. You know, I, I'd like to see each one of us just try to give someone just an opportunity. I think, I think that moves the dial. And always putting it on the government, what can the government do, what can, what can you do? What can you do as a person to help somebody? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. Please remind me at future meetings to go before Jamel. You make it so hard to follow. You're awesome. Over the weekend, so over the weekend, I did receive a call from the organizers of the Summit for LA. Due to their overwhelming support, they expressed their need for more space, because they outgrew the garage, which is amazing. So I'd like to thank the Fire, I'd like to thank Fire Chief Evers, Mayor Fagan, Administrator Baldwin, City Solicitor Giacobi, Councilman Pulowski, and Councilwoman Hamlet for their hard work over the weekend, so that we could secure the old fire station as a drop-off location for the Summit for LA team, who have also partnered with Nordstrom's to ship their second phase of toiletries and baby essentials. So I encourage you to follow them on Instagram, @summit underscore LA, underscore, I'm sorry, I'm gonna start over. Follow them on Instagram, @summit underscore for underscore LA, so that you can see their full list of items they're looking for. They also have, have a list of times for drop-offs, and would highly encourage you to take a list, take a look at the list that they need, because obviously this is something that is affecting many people, and when you're talking, you know, clothes can be worn over again and again. However, toiletries, baby essentials, those things, they come and they go. So that's going to be a constant need for the residents of LA. And I'd really like to thank the administrators or the organizers of Summit for LA for doing such a wonderful job. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Pulowski?
I actually just have the times, if anybody is interested in donating, tomorrow from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thursday, 9:30 to 1:30, Friday, 9:30 to 11:30, and then again on Monday, 9:30 to 12:30 p.m. And that's at the, in the East Bays, no, I'm sorry, the West Bays, at the, at the Old Firehouse.
Great, thank you. Other comments from council? And I just have a couple. One, thank you, Mr. Cohen, for coming. You jogged my memory. I think around 10, maybe it was eight or nine years ago, we had someone who came and had a, was also about the horrors of puppy mills and was talking about things that Summit should do. And Summit actually passed an ordinance at that time, as a result of that. We don't allow, I believe, Madam Clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure we do not allow the sale of puppies and dogs in our town. So we have, as you mentioned, some pet-related stores that service pets, but we don't sell. And that, and it was a direct result of that advocacy, so that was you, okay, great. Yeah, so thanks for coming back, I mean-
Part of our ordinance is now 10-4.
Yeah, so this is more, I get it, is really advocating at the state level, so thank you for this. The other comment I'd have is, I just wanted to kind of close the loop, because I know our mayor spoke about this, about the accomplishments that the task force has. And I saw a news article that came out a couple of weeks ago about, and I want to thank the mayor, but also thank our congressional representative, Tom Kane, for really working, I think, for the homeless. And I think this sometimes gets misconstrued or maybe criticized, but they worked very, very hard to actually close the post office vestibule that was being used by a few unhoused people as an overnight place to sleep. And I, so when they mentioned that, I was like, you gonna get the post office to do anything? Good luck with that. But our mayor, yeah, she said, "I'm gonna do it." And, and working with Congressman Kane, they were able to accomplish that. And I, I, someone forwarded me a screenshot from Facebook, because as you guys have heard, I don't go on it, that was very critical of that. And I just want to say, you know, I think that what they did was, it, I want to be careful with my words. It's important to help people. And, and as the mayor mentioned, this task force is doing incredible work. And I want to thank Councilwoman Hamlet, I know she's been involved in that and was one of the first ones to really get this thing going. And the things that they've done have been amazing, because they are helping people. And they're not just throwing up their hands and saying, "It's okay for people to live in a post office vestibule." It's not good for them. No one would do it if they had a choice, or if they were thinking of other options. And, and it's, I think it takes courage to go and try and do things and really say, like, we're gonna try and help these people to not have to sleep in vestibules, and not to accept that that's okay, because it's not. It's not okay for them, it's not compassionate to them. And I really, really applaud the work that the homelessness task force has. You know, the, the comments I saw online were like, you know, you're not, we have to deal with root causes, we have to deal with this and that, and there's incoming inequality and a lack of shelter. If you think that way, nothing will get done. And I'm really, really proud of the work that these people have done in town, led by our mayor and all the other volunteers, because they don't take that for granted. They, they're going to do something, and they have done something, and that's really amazing. I mean, I honestly think other towns are going to start to emulate the work that we've done here in Summit, because we were effective. They are, they are putting people who have been homeless in homes. They're connecting them with social workers to get the help that they need for long-term solutions, and that's really amazing. So I really just wanted to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, you guys are doing amazing work. And that's the end of my comment, so. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.